Okay, I'll call this workshop to order. We've just, I've been asked to remind everyone to please speak into the mic real close because of the sound issues here. So he said it would be better if we spoke close that way, we can all hear well. Madam Clerk, will you please call the room?
Mayor Blackwell?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
We want to jump right into the agenda. Do we have anything else? Ms. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. How are we alerting you tonight, by the way? Are we just waving at you? Um, when we get done with our agenda, I actually have a thing or two I'd like to discuss. If you could give me a moment before you wrap it up?
A moment for Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
We'll call that an M and M?
Yes.
No problem. Well, our first item is a discussion regarding the commercial and residential architectural standards. We will recognize our distinguished Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Tonight, we would like to do a presentation on the architectural standards, specifically the residential design standards. Despite what the agenda says, "commercial," we had intentions of talking about the commercial standards. However, one component of the commercial standards which we were proposing to change has to do with industrial standards. And just as a brief overview, the existing non-residential architectural standards deals primarily with kind of urban downtown architectural standards and does not fully address the suburban retail standards, nor does it address office standards, nor does it address industrial standards. And so that is the next amendment that we will bring forward for a workshop discussion as to how to address those types of standards to ensure that we get the type of architecture that St. Cloud deserves. So, switching gears, we will be talking about the residential standards. And so on your screen, you'll see, the purpose, you know, with any architectural standards is to address the aesthetics and to ensure that, you know, whatever development is produced, it's well-designed and has a positive impact on the built environment and also promotes a sense of community. We want to ensure that it increases the overall durability, construction quality of the construction, and also we want to always ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the public to create a community that's attractive, walkable, and sustainable. Again, as always, we, whatever we do with our code, we ensure that it's consistent with our strategic goals. Of course, it's consistent with our growth management goal, our economic development goal, as well as our infrastructure goal. The architectural standards for residential is broken into two basic categories. One is dealing with single-family detached and attached structures. Second is the multifamily structures. And we're defining multifamily in this instance for the purpose of categorization only as anything that contains three or more units, understanding that our impact fees categorizes it differently. And, you know, multifamily is actually more units than just three units. And then, of course, I guess the third category would be any type of mixed-use structure that contains residential units within it. As far as a basic overview of the standards for single-family structures, it kind of goes through some basic categories. One has to do with the variety. So we're talking about the variety of the models themselves, the paint color, and the elevations of the structures. They need to be varied, and you, the expectation is that they're not similar if they're across from each other or even diagonally from each other, so that we have this variety and interest when you're walking down a road. Also, we want to ensure that we have exterior materials that are durable. So we're talking about bricks, stucco tile, cast stone, and so on. At least 75% of the surface need to have some type of durable material. And the list, of course, is not exhaustive because there's a lot of technology out there that will allow for other types of materials that we have not yet thought about. So we want to give the developers the flexibility to propose other types of materials that may still meet that criteria. As far as front porches and stoops, we want to also regulate that in a fashion that creates some visual interest, such as requiring a certain minimum porch depth and also stoop height, sort of to separate the public space from the private space when you're going into residential structures. Further, as far as some additional standards for single-family, we're also looking at the garages. The garages should not be the prominent feature and should be subordinate to the overall structure. It should not take up the, you know, more than 50% that, you know, all you're seeing is a garage door and the entry to the structure is, you know, maybe one-fifth of the entire facade. Driveways, it requires pavers. If the driveways exceed 60% of the front yard, and this is something that we still need to explore further because obviously there are some challenges, and one of our council members just brought to my attention, that there may be some challenges with pavers just because sometimes they sink and then you have some ruts. So, you know, we have to also, the idea of requiring it aesthetically is great, however, it may have some drawbacks to using pavers. As far as the massing and composition of the structure, we want to ensure that there's different architectural treatments on the structure, such as windows, window sills, shutters, you know, those types of things that, again, creates visual interest. And then as far as the doors and windows, as I said, we want to ensure that it provides some kind of accentuation and distinction as to those uses. The next I'm going to show you are some images, and these are not the only images, but it's some ideas. And I'm prefacing that before, saying, "Well, why did you pick that one?" Well, I just wanted to highlight a certain feature. So these are some examples of architectural, residential architecture that we like. The craftsman style, where you have the porch prominent. And, of course, the top two examples, actually, top three, top two and the left example are rear-loaded structures. You'll see there's a step up to the porch in one example, and then the bottom right is an example of front-loaded, but in that end, in that example, the garage is not the prominent or dominant feature of this example. Instead, you have a accessory structure or dwelling above the garage. There's glazing in the garage door, even though it's a solid two-car garage. The fact that it's recessed back and the remainder of the house is more prominent is sort of the desired effect that we're trying to achieve with these designs. This is an example of sort of what we would prohibit, where the garage is the main feature. In the top two examples, all you're seeing is a facade of the garage and garage door and actually not seeing the rest of the structure. In the bottom two examples, while they may not be horrible examples, the reason why we would prohibit those is, again, the garage is the dominant feature and it's forward of the primary living space. So, you know, those could be easily corrected by, for instance, splitting the garage door into two separate doors as opposed to one single surface, adding some sort of accessory structure, or, you know, maybe moving the porch further forward. I think those are examples that would make it a little better. Moving on to the multifamily structures, these are, again, you know, anything three or more. And the buildings, one of the requirements that we would like to achieve is that the buildings would be oriented towards the street. Now, this may not always be the case because you have very large apartment complexes where you have obviously internal buildings. But up and entering the community, the buildings that are at the entrance at least should be facing the street. There should also be some kind of transitional space, again, between the public and private that are street-facing. Vehicle parking, surface parking cannot be located between the public street and the building. It should be towards rear. And then, of course, methods for screening dumpsters and utility structures and so on. There's obviously many different ways to screen that through landscaping or through some architectural treatment, you know, fences or whatever it might be. Another component of the multifamily structures is that it should, to the greatest extent possible, incorporate principles for walkability and principles from the SEPTED, which is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Another criteria that we encourage and would require is that you not have blank walls. We don't want any large expanses or just a solid wall with no kind of architectural treatment. So we want to see things like cornices and freezes and varying roof lines and so on. As far as material and color, it should complement adjacent neighborhoods or adjacent uses. We should not have any fluorescent paint. You know, that's one of those challenges that, you know, we've seen in other places. So that's definitely something that's prohibited. We hesitate to specify, you know, it should be earth tones or, because then you can end with an entire community that's all tan. And I'm not sure that's exactly what is desired, but I think we are at least saying we do not want fluorescent. Because, I mean, a community may be a tropical-themed community, so, you know, color is really is kind of a personal preference in that instance. Again, we want to ensure that we have, again, long-lasting durable materials as part of the multifamily development. Again, let me preface this by saying these pictures and examples are examples that are not local. I want to show, highlight some of the things that we think would be acceptable. So these are things that we consider, you know, having protrusions and having, as I see in the bottom left, the example of the public-private space where you create that transition from the street to the units. They're broken up. It's not this long expanse of a solid wall. It's broken up with different architectural treatments. The roof lines are varied and so on. This is an example of something that we would not like to see, and that is these large monolithic structures, as shown in the top example, of just rows and rows and rows of windows with no real interest in how they appear. In the bottom example, while not horrible, it, again, has this, you know, solid blank wall that really doesn't have any visual interest in terms of a positive-negative spaces. And then the bottom right example, the reason I show that as an example is that this is an example of a structure that's facing the street, but there's no transition from the street to the structure. In addition, the facade is, you know, uninteresting and blank. So that's a quick overview of the standards. So I'm happy to answer any questions and get some feedback and as we move forward with tweaking this further, so.
I have a question that I had raised. How does these standards impact affordable housing, or do they not have any impact?
Well, I think it would be naive to say that it does not have any impact because, you know, when you add more things to a building, it would increase the cost. However, I think it's quite important that we achieve a higher level of architectural aesthetics in the city. And I think that will be the challenge for us, to figure out how we make these requirements more affordable to developers. And that may mean that we have to seek incentives or grants or whatever to provide, to allow developers to provide affordable units within any one of their projects.
I know that one of the things that I've read about, there are developments now that are being proposed in certain cities where affordable housing is actually part of the development, so that, you know, you're not building some neighborhood that's, you know, poor, you know, it's incorporated into developments. And it seems like to me to be a very interesting and plausible idea.
Yes, that is correct. Many developers, if they receive, you know, grant funding or whatever, would be required to maintain, you know, 10% of the project would be affordable housing. And so no one would ever know the difference. It would just be funding that's provided to allow for those units to be made affordable. And typically, they will, if it's like rental units, they will require them to be affordable for an X period, an X period of time, you know, five, 10 years or whatever it might be as a caveat. Yeah, but that's something that's, and that's typically handled, there's a lot of times federal funding that will do that through CDBG or even through the SHIP program.
Yeah, I know that one of the things that I think is an advantage to the fact that we've become an entitlement city is that, you know, that becomes a possibility, certainly as we continue to grow and get more funding.
Absolutely.
And that certainly is a great need in our own neighborhood. But I don't think affordable housing has to look like cheap housing.
And that's kind of the point of trying to elevate the requirements for architecture because there should not be, you should not be able to tell that this is an affordable housing house versus a market-rate home. I think it's just a matter of how we fund it or subsidize it through some funding mechanism to ensure that we maintain a high level of architecture.
So who makes, what is the process? Enlighten me on how colors are decided.
So...
I'm certainly not in favor of fluorescent orange or green.
I don't know. That's a good thing. I mean, it's been done in many other communities, so it's not, it's not a new thing. It's just something new to St. Cloud as far as how we go through that process. And we will, you know, take some best practices from other cities as to how they handle that. Many times, you know, colors and stuff is sort of regulated through the HOA, you know, they all have a set of standards that says, you know, no, no purple houses on this block or whatever. So there's different ways to regulate it and to lay it out, but we'll definitely come back with some ideas based on best practices.
Do we have any ideas to alternatives to pavers? Pavers are nice, but they are high maintenance.
You know, I just had a conversation like two minutes before we started, and now we've got to start thinking about that a little more closely. Because, I mean, you know, when you lay an architect, a plan out, you know, conceptually it makes sense, but then, you know, the day it's installed, everything is great. And then, you know, a year from now, things start buckling and you've got to figure out how we maintain it. Because whatever we do, we need to make sure that it's sustainable and that it doesn't deteriorate or start creating unintended issues with respect to, you know, durability and so on. So, yeah, we'll have to kind of explore it a little further.
Okay, and you talked about a wording that would certainly leave room for the development of new composites and stuff of that nature that...
That's correct.
Things are just happening.
Yeah, there's, there's so many materials out there. I mean, Matheny remembers, we had a conversation about a wall, and it was this composite concrete cementous material that was quite lightweight, but it was actually very durable, so...
And lasts longer than concrete.
Right. So we really need to, you know, be open to different types of materials and really allow for the creativity to come from the developers and those in the industry that are experienced in that area rather than limit them to say it can only be these things.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Matheny, Councilmember Matheny?
So I would like to make a proclamation that Mr. Andre Anderson is my favorite person today.
Today. Today.
Today. I gotta keep you, I gotta keep you going for, you know, reach it for the stars.
Still have like five and a half more hours, so it's good.
This week. I'll give him this week. I'll give him this week. So thank you for putting all this together. This is the stuff, you know, we've all been talking about. And I know I've been hounding the aesthetic angle for a while. And I do remember that meeting that we had with, it was a storage facility where they came with some new material. And poor Andre has to, you know, that's why I'm like, "Let's get it in writing," because I don't think it's fair for him to do the heavy lifting for us and trying to argue to get the better materials because we don't have it written in our code. So I think we've been slowly, like, chipping away at that. But I know it's probably, like, it's an ongoing live document that you'll, you know. I'm always like, "Let me know how people are, you know, working their way around the language, and we'll tighten it up and help you out with that." But I had a list of items myself, which you covered most of them. And one thing I wanted to talk about was the affordable housing. So for three and a half years, we've been talking about affordable housing, and we've been all saying that, you know, these high-end developments will just put a smaller version, you know, they'll have some percentage of their development be like a smaller version, and that's what makes it affordable and that. But we just really haven't seen anybody do it yet. You know, they keep saying they're going to do it, but nobody has done it. So one of my pet peeves, as you know, is when you go into a development and it's just like the same house over and over again, like maybe one little, one little material or something is different, but it's essentially the same house. And it's like, "Hey, what shade of brown do you want?" You know, it's like brown house, light brown house, dark brown house, medium brown house, brown, brown, you know. So I know when I've, and maybe Mr. Trace is going to have an idea for this, but when I have gone into new developments and you're like, you know, gone with family members and things when you're going to go buy in a new development, right? So you walk in the door and they have this great little map of their community, and they show you which lots are available. Well, I know whenever we've gone in to look at this, the first thing you do is pick the lot you want, right? That's the first thing you do. Like, "I want that lot. I want this corner lot. I want that one right there." And then they'll say, "Okay, models A, B, C, and F are on that lot. That's what fits on that lot type." So then, you know, then you'll go look at what, like, those models are, and then you'll pick. Well, it's like, how do we actually create a process where we're preventing the monotony? Like, how exactly do you do it? Whose obligation is it? Is it a city staff? We need to hire a position for someone to be the gatekeeper and like actually looking and making sure? Because I think if we leave it to the developer, I'm not sure that's going to happen. And then we all go out in the neighborhood and we're like, "What the heck? It's not, it's not what we said." Well, the houses are built, people are living in it, you know, there's kind of the bell has been rung, we can't fix it. So, you know, how do we actually make this happen? I mean, that's kind of my first question, and that's what I'm saying, Mr. Trace maybe has some ideas to that. The other thing is, we just recently had a development come in where they had 15 different elevations in, you know, in their plan set. Well, I tell you, I drove through the neighborhood and they're all the same, they're all the same elevation. So, you know, is there, is it a price differential that causes the problem? Like, "Hey, this is the cheap entry-level house and it's X dollars, but here's these other 14 that are $20,000 more apiece." And then everyone's like, "Eh, I don't really care that much. I want to spend the money in my bathroom." Like, "I don't really care with the outside." So maybe we need to say, "Y'all need to have, in the same price category, multiple elevations so that people actually make a choice instead of just like, 'I want the cheapest one. This is the one I can afford.'" So maybe that's like a way. Another thing that bothers me is when you're driving down the road and you're looking at the back of the community and it's the same big box you're looking at at the back, you know? Porch on the left, porch on the right, porch on the left, porch on the right, but it's the same box. So one of the ways I think that would help personally is you pass by a few communities around here, like Turtle Creek, and then is it Twin Oaks? I always mess that one up. But they've got these beautiful landscaped berms that you don't even know what's on the other side of them, you know? And when you do that, I feel like nobody gets upset about the community. Like, when you're not like, "Oh, there's houses and houses and houses," you're kind of like buffered, like, "So maybe we increase our buffer requirements." Like, "You got to put a berm. You got to screen the heck out of it." Like, "If y'all ever have time to just kind of drive down..." It has like a different feeling in your chest when you pass it versus when you're like, "There's a house on top of a house on top of a house that I'm looking at from 10th Street." So that's one thing I would like. You know, we just recently had this situation that probably most of us got called on out in Tohoku where all the trees went down. And when you looked at the plans that got approved, it said 0% trees saved. That, that's just sad to me that we're not trying to, I understand you can't save every tree, but just to say, "We're wiping them all out." I mean, that's like, that's what gives a community character to me. Like, when I'm in Winter Park and I'm in this old part of the community, which looks just like our grid, you know, the differential for me is the trees. Like, you've got these beautiful giant tree, tree canopy. I was in a neighborhood this week that I drove into, really nice houses, but I felt like, "Gosh, there's like not a single tree in this place." Like, you know, maybe somebody has a crepe myrtle in their front yard, or they have a palm tree. But it's like you don't, it doesn't give you the character like, like you get with old trees. So, you know, maybe there's something we can do with our tree ordinance to try to get some, some trees. I went out and looked at the community that's coming in off of Cyril's, and they saved some of the big, you know, historic trees. It just adds like instant character to me, to a community. So those are some things for me. I like the garage, go ahead.
No, could you just remind me again, the first one, I, your first one?
The monotony of elevations?
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And like, how do we actually make sure it happens? Like, I think maybe we need a staff person that when building permits get pulled, they, like, their, like, literal job is to just keep an eye on all the developments.
Right.
So the color schemes we kind of talked about, I like the fact that you said, "Don't make the garages like the central feature." I like that, too. You know, so I had made a note about rear-loaded products, too, like, as a way to like not see the garages. You know, I went into another new community that we have, and I was like, really, like the shingles that they were putting on, I don't even think were architectural shingles. I didn't even know you could get single tap anymore. But, you know, maybe there's a way to tie color palettes to architectural shingles and just really try to like create some differences. I saw you had, I think on one of your slides, you had shutters.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, actually have real-sized shutters that look like they could actually And I know you're saying that you're going to look at other communities to see if there's anything that we can do, like, you know, taking, don't create it from scratch if we don't have to, like, if there's something we can do. We're not talking about commercial. But I wanted to comment on this, and I don't know if this is something that we control or not, but I was, I've been watching an apartment complex go up in Osceola County, and it's in a nice part of town. I'm not even joking, I think the whole thing is built out of plywood. Like, there's not one bit of masonry or stonework or anything on it. Like, I'm watching it go up, I'm like, "It's plywood and it's wrapped in plastic." Like, do we have any rules of like how they construct these buildings so that they're not going to fall apart and...
That obviously is a building code requirement as far as the construction materials. So I'll, you know, coordinate with the building official as to what kind of minimum standards buildings...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you're building like a six-story apartment complex, like, shouldn't there be some block in there? I mean, just seems to me like, yeah, it's going to look pretty when they get done, but it's going to fall apart in 10 years because it's plywood. I like the idea with the part, hiding the parking behind the building that you mentioned. I have that on here. And I think that's it for me.
Okay, so if I can kind of speak to some of these and kind of give you some responses as to what we can think about. As far as the monotony of elevations and how we could address that, you rightly said, you know, it probably needs to be a staff person that would do that. But I think more importantly, we probably need to use technology to do that and not a manual process of getting a map and coloring them, you know? So there's probably some way to set up a filter and our, you know, set up a computerized system that says, "Once you got this, you can't do anything, you know, north, south, east, west can't be X," and try to figure out some kind of, some kind of algorithm that would allow us to do that. Obviously, we test to make sure it works. I think that would make it a lot easier. So we can definitely look into that, how that would do that. I think also we could coordinate and work with the developers because they may already have a system in place of how they manage it as well, but we don't know that until we have some more conversations with them. More elevations in the same price point, I think that's a great idea. We'll definitely put that burden on the developer to say, "Okay, we need to..." We'll definitely put that burden on the developer to say, okay, we need to get at least three or four different elevations within the same price point so that people have a choice and it looks different. And it's not just a different color, as you say. Rare elevation berms to buffer, that's not necessarily a architectural requirement, but we can definitely get with the Parks Department on the landscape code to see how we would address that. Understand that the, if you dig deeper into this code, one of the things is that we are wanting to ensure that the building is interesting from all perspectives, not just simply from the front. Because if a building, well, I said, build, I mean a home, is on a, or the side of a building is on a street, that's a side street, you should not just see the side of the house. If she's set up house, maybe a window or something that makes that view interesting. So it's not just, simply just the front of the building. All sides of the building needs to have some kind of architectural treatment. As far as rear-loaded, I don't think that's a problem, you know, trying to require rear-loaded. I think it's going to, I guess, dictate on the size of the units. I mean, if they're very small, small units, then rear-loaded is probably the preferred choice. As far as architectural singles, again, those has to do with materials. We can definitely prohibit certain, you know, materials that you can't have single tab or whatever, that kind of thing. As far as real-sized shutters, I think, again, that's a great idea. I think we can definitely add that kind of provision in that it has to be. You know, again.
The appearance that you can close it.
Right, yeah. Because again, if we require real shutters, that may increase the cost and developers may balk at that. However, keep in mind, it could also serve a dual purpose because then you have a shutter for hurricanes. So, you know, it all depends on how you want to view, because if you don't have real shutters, then you still have to put something to protect the windows. So, that may have an added benefit. And then, the minimum Florida building code, I will definitely get with the building official as to how that is set up. So, those are the things I answered.
I have one more, sorry. So, and the other thing I think that makes great communities for me personally is just interconnectivity, walkability, you know, definitely connecting to the, we're trying to really push our trail and sidewalk system and interconnecting and doing all that stuff. So, I know in some communities, we've been successful in getting them to really highlight the fact that it's not only what's internal that they can tile and, you know, starting to create a real network. So, I think that's also important.
And that is, that is a current requirement. If it's not, that we've talked about, have the interconnectivity even between projects. So it's not, you know, it's one way in and one way out, but you can actually have multiple options. Oh, there's one more thing that you mentioned. Oh, the, you mentioned about the Winter Park and the grid and, you know, that, the whole aesthetic there. That is something that, again, I'll get with Stephanie on the parks requirement to make sure that we, because right now, we do have a provision for tree preservation that if we have legacy or what they call specimen trees or legacy or trees of a certain size, you know, we, as a disincentive for taking it down, the replacement fee has to be significantly high to, as a disincentive. And we are looking at that. And I don't think the number is high enough to, as a disincentive. And there's, and there's all these, you know, legacy trees that, you know, 48-inch diameter and larger that we probably do need to preserve.
Well, see, like, I remember Mr. Askew bringing up a long time ago, and I don't know if we ever resolved it, was like, somebody wanted to add on to their house and there was something with the tree and for them to get the tree permit, they were just going to like tear the tree down versus pay the $4,600 for some kind of variance or something, you know, to like, did we ever resolve that?
Hmm, yeah, I remember it. And I don't think we ever resolved it because it sort of went away, but we will definitely revisit it. But, yeah, because it was, it was more expensive to get the variance than, than just cut the tree down. And, yeah, it is something that we need to look at because obviously that tree was quite important. But what it meant was that the setbacks had to be modified to accommodate the tree. And we are, that's one thing that we will need to go back and look at to make sure that we don't lose the tree because of some impediment in the cost to get the variance.
Yeah, that Tohoku plan didn't get approved in the city, but when I looked at it, I was just so sad that it just said zero percent of trees preserved, zero. Like, so, I mean, I'm just like, obviously the penalty of taking the trees down or trying to save some of them or working around or doing some, I understand some of them are junk, but it's like, zero percent were saved? Like, that's just shocking to me. So, want to make sure we try to incorporate those things.
Yeah, if you mind, Kindred, right next to Tohoku, did the complete opposite. They saved a majority of their large trees and they worked with the company. And that's why when you drive into Kindred, I don't know about the houses, but there's a lot more live oak trees.
Yeah, the feel is better when you come in, yeah.
Yeah?
I'm good.
Awesome. All right, my comments. So it's amazing how just even community did, like, I know we're talking about architecture, but community design can, can really do a lot more for a community than some of the architectural features. Just having well-defined and shorter block lengths with roadway connections, having street trees, having thoughtful open spaces can really, it doesn't matter what the architecture is. Kind of that Kindred example versus the Tohoku example. Architecture-wise, one might be better than the other, but then streetscape-wise, one might be better than the other, right? And they're, and it's not the same in both instances. So, just having some, some design standards on the, on the layout side of things. Good open spaces, kind of centered to where, you know, your eye is looking towards that instead of just staring at, you know, the front of a, you know, or the side of a building that's just a blank wall with no windows in it kind of thing.
I think part of that is going to come down to working with the developers in terms of laying the project out, in terms of creating vistas and views and muse and those other things in your traditional neighborhood design. Depending on, you know, I think we're going to try to get away from the more traditional curvilinear cul-de-sac developments and try to get more into designs that have, not necessarily a strict grid per se, because I mean, obviously the site constraints would dictate that. But at least have more options for connectivity in the design.
And then, a big decision to make is, do we want to be TND style or not? You know, doing the berms and blocking off neighborhoods with walls, like, that is the antithesis of TND design. Like, having the architecture and houses fronting onto the roads, even the major roads is kind of like that TND thing. So it's just a matter of kind of which, which style do we want in some of those instances? Looking through just central Florida architectural codes, kind of doing some research for this. Horizon West is a big one, a big area in West Orange County, pretty much the whole, I don't know, 10,000 acres developed under kind of a similar set of building and architecture codes. They organize theirs kind of based on lot size of anything less than 50 feet, had a set, certain set of architectural standards, you know? Garage had to be in the back of the house, had to be alley-loaded instead of front-loaded. Anything between, I think, 50 and like 65 or 70 feet had a different set of architectural standards. And then, anything above that had a, had a different set of architectural standards and setbacks. And, you know, I kind of feel like that's what, some of those instances is what we should have in our code. You know, there's areas out in, you know, a lot of it's not in the city, but the area in the manor, you wouldn't want some of these standard, you wouldn't want like a little front porch stuck on the front of like a massive, massive house for some of those, or it's setback so far from the road, you can't even see the house. You know, does, does a lot of this matter? So just not having a one-size-fits-all code for this, but maybe it morphs based on setbacks or, you know, some of these larger lot sizes. I brought up the paper driveway part. Also, like Deputy Mayor Matheny brought up, a lot of the massing of these houses is the same. It might have a porch versus not, or, but like the building structure itself, 80% of that building is all the same feel and the same look and the same massing. So I think just, there were some, some notion of that in here, but just, you know, having some of that kind of drawn out. Again, in the Horizon West code, theirs didn't, didn't have, every house has to have a front porch. It was 50% of the houses under a certain size had to have a front porch because I think there are some houses that, in architectural styles, that just wouldn't look right with a, with a porch on it. Some of the Mediterranean-looking houses don't, like, a front porch is like a craftsman thing with, you know, the railing and, you know, the rocking chairs and some houses just wouldn't, wouldn't make sense for that. On the material side of things, just like the mayor brought up of a different concrete style that might make sense. I almost want us to prohibit certain finishes, but then leave it open to others. I didn't see board and batten in there, but like, I know a lot of people really like that farmhouse look and board and batten is like kind of, you know, structural to that, that architectural style. I had the same question about how do we ensure this happens, you know, lot specifically? I think your idea about using technology is a good stance for that. You know, kind of sorry Veronica's not here for, for me to say this, but GIS person would really help doing that, laying out that. Her and I discuss that quite often. Do we have master plan permitting to where if the builder comes in, they get all their plans approved and then it's kind of in the system?
To my knowledge, we do.
Okay, and does, does anyone utilize that?
Yes. That's my understanding in talking with our building official, yes.
Okay, because that, that'll help getting it in the system. Because I, I don't think any of these builders keep track and then it's, once they get caught doing it, they'll just paint that house a different color if it's the same style as, you know, the house next to it.
Well, also too, and back to the idea of technology, I had a conversation with, with another builder and, you know, they're now using, you know, virtual reality to actually see the elevations as they would appear. You can actually walk through not just the floor plan, but also the site itself. You know, driving on the road, walking up to the house, you know, seeing how.
Or even what the house backs up to if it's a wetland or lawn or something.
And so that's an idea that's, that's been out there for a little while, especially with COVID-19 and.
I think a lot of that's going to change, oh yeah.
So, yeah, so I think that's going to be more prevalent moving forward.
So, yeah, if they're utilizing that master plan permitting, I think that'll really help.
Yes.
You guys, you know, make sure that that all happens. So it looks like every, every house with a garage facing the right of way, the garage has to be back behind the front of the house?
Or something that protrudes beyond, so in other words, if the garage and living space is, you know, in line, then the porch or whatever that you enter the house has to be forward of that.
Okay. And then I just went through and tried to, to map out some of these requirements on an individual lot of, you know, if it's no more than 50% of the facade has to be, can be garage kind of thing and no more than 60% for the driveway. And if you have a 40-foot lot and a normal two-car garage, you would have to have a paper driveway. But if you had a 50-foot lot and a two-car garage, you could do concrete, so you wouldn't have to do pavers. So would we have just this checkerboard of concrete pavers, you know, actual concrete and back and forth? So I just, I just want to make sure that we kind of button up some of those.
Well, again, I guess the question then is, is that not preferred? Or do you want the same? Because, I mean, I would think that's, one house has pavers, one has concrete, one may have, you know, blacktop. I mean, I guess, you know, I don't know. I mean, it's really kind of the aesthetic of what the developer might want for the overall community, so.
Yeah, I think aesthetic-wise, pavers look better. It's just maintenance and like, if I replace my driveway, it'll be back with concrete because I'm just not a fan of the maintenance of the pavers. And if you have a tree, it just uproots them.
And actually, I had a conversation yesterday with another developer and they were telling me how they have pavers in the driveway and they had the Viburnum. And, you know, that's just like, considered a shrub, I guess. But, but they let it grow for so, so many years that it kind of formed an arch over their driveway. And of course, you know, keeping it trimmed for the arch, then they realized that it was actually, the roots were getting larger and larger and was actually buckling the paver, so, you know? And that would typically be a shrub. So it's interesting how that happened.
And then, I can't remember who said the comment, but there's, when buyers are looking at houses, they'll always find the value. You know, just like when we're looking for a house, you'll, you'll find the value in the neighborhood you want and the price point you want. And then I think with new neighborhoods, they'll find that plan that has the most value, the most bedrooms per square foot or the most, you know, whatever the thing is. And that's why you get this monotony because it's the same, you know, two plans that sell in a neighborhood that might have 15. So, yeah, just us tracking that would be a big thing. On the multifamily side of things, I didn't fully understand the transitional space, the three feet of risers into the first floor and just how that depth worked out. And I thought usually, because of ADA requirements with renting multifamily, a lot of those first-floor units end up getting used by folks that are in wheelchairs or have access issues. So then having them up on a step, then you limit that. So I just didn't know. I just want to look into that if we start going down some of those steps as well. And then, another thing I've had people reach out about, and then I also see in articles, is build for rent or build to rent, which is essentially a, instead of a vertical apartment complex where you're three or four stories up, this is, I'll call it a horizontal apartment complex or multifamily complex where it's individual houses or units, or maybe it's duplexes or townhomes, but it's all under one common ownership and they're rented. Arizona has a lot of them and I think it's going to permeate through, through the market and come into Orlando. I think a lot of their building standards will be different. So when we talk about, you know, multifamily, it might not be that, that style of multifamily or it's three or four stories. It might be horizontal. So I just want to make sure that, you know, as we're looking through architectural standards and also some of the building standards, how do we, how do we put that into code?
Well, again, I, I think though, that even if it's built to rent, that's just a form of ownership. It's still a single-family detached unit. So it still would fall under those requirements. Just the fact that it's a rental doesn't make it any different than would be a fee simple ownership.
A lot of these, the layout of them, it's, it's way different.
Oh, I understand. But I think we can impose a lot of requirements we want to ensure that we have that non-monotony that we're talking about and it's not this sameness, you know, it's just because it's all on the one ownership.
I just think there's a lot of the houses that end up coming up for sale in town, end up going, it seems like, to a lot of the, a lot of groups that just buy and they, they have a real estate portfolio of houses that they own. So, you know, the normal resident can't even buy some of these houses. They'd have to rent them from firms doing the same thing because there's no new multifamily activity in town. And then I don't think everyone wants to live in a three or four-story, you know, multifamily building. So just figuring out that, that in-between, I think some of these, these horizontal apartments might, might make sense.
That, as well as the opportunity to do infill, especially in the grid. I mean, there's many opportunities to create higher-density infill residential. And actually, in the Vision St. Cloud, we had talked about some ideas of creating these areas that where the homes front onto a square, for instance, and it could be multifamily or townhomes in a way that creates this interesting square, sort of like what you see like in Savannah, Georgia, you know, that, that type of design.
Yeah, just know with some of this infill, there's a couple neighborhoods that'll have a house that might have gotten torn down or there was some issue or vacant lot that a new house gets built and it's like super modern in the middle of this, you know, normal contemporary.
We are trying to, to address that. It's all, you know, because of course, a good portion of the grid, at least not a, a portion of the grid, I should say, is in historical districts. So, we try to ensure that at least what's within the immediate area is at least compatible with or consistent with the design, their historical design, yes.
Okay. I think that's all my comments.
I just got a couple of comments. One is, we seem to be talking a little bit more about the commercial side and a little bit less on the residential I'm talking about. So, a family goes ahead and buys a piece of property or a house and wants to redo the house. Are they going to be stuck to the standards that we're setting to this day? Or are we going to, are we a little bit more flexible? I'm talking about places in the grid. It seems like a lot of them.
You mean converting from residential to commercial?
Well, not really residential to commercial. We don't seem to be catching a lot of that. But, I mean, it seems like there is a lot of commercial coming in and using the residential and we're not capturing that in a correct way. But, again, I don't think that's staff or any of us. That's just sort of mischievous things going on out in the grid. And I just, I want to be real careful that if some of these younger couples decide they're going to buy a young house or a house and they want to tear it down and rebuild to something of their standard, I don't want to make our standards so high that they can't rebuild or they can't add on to the house or anything like that.
Right. So, two things. So, a existing non-conforming structure can be rebuilt to be, which may be functionally obsolete, obsolete can be rebuilt to be functional. And so, for instance, if, say, the side setback on the non-conforming structure was. say, the side setback on the non-conforming structure was two feet, the new code says it has to be five feet, we're not going to require them to go five feet, they can continue to maintain the two feet along that axis, so they may want to extend the home, make it larger for more square footage, and that's, you find that more with the 25-foot-wide lots that are in the grid, that it's really hard to do anything with them, but simply just rebuild it as it was. Yeah, we already amended the code to allow for that, so it wouldn't prohibit non-conforming structures from being rebuilt in a way that makes them functional.
Okay. And is this something we're going to, like, have a workshop and have developers come up with their ideas as too? I mean, this seems like we were coming up with them, but I'm sure there's going to be pushing-
Are you suggesting it?
No, I'm just, they have, you know, we do have some folks up here that understand that a lot better than I do, but, and that's why I look for the insight, but a lot of times, it seems like we'll do a workshop like this, and the next day I just get phone calls like, "Did you think of this? Did you think of this? Did you think of this?"
Well, you know, the simple answer to that is, I can give my phone number, and it's on the record, and they can call me, and we can discuss it. I mean, our office is always open to get input from developers. We can actively seek out developers, you know, I mean, it's a public process, so anyone can provide comments at any time before it's adopted, and, you know, by, to adopt this, it takes two public hearings, so, you know, that's really where we can get a lot of input as well.
I know, we come up with some ideas up here in council, and then we'll throw them out there, and then that's when we run into some challenges, but that's the beauty of an ordinance, you can change it and shape it the way you want it to be shaped, but, no, I like everything that's being said here.
So, am I your favorite person today, like Deputy Mayor Matheny?
I extended it, it's for the week.
Yeah, my favorite person today.
Five more hours.
Well, I think it would be some great value in bringing in developers who have built communities that have some of these ideas that you think are certainly on the cutting edge and are incorporating some of the ideas that we're thinking about. I think it would help us to think outside of the box, and I think that would be very valuable.
I think of Oriet Park and Winter Garden and all these places you were talking about.
Horizon West, yes.
I have a question. When it, when it comes to, you talked about windows and doors, is energy efficiency, is that incorporated into the architectural standards?
That's sort of a given, and if it's not, we will emphasize that, because we do talk about lead and all those standards, energy-efficient windows and so, yeah, it's in there.
Any other, any other input?
I just have one comment. I don't know if Mr. Trace was on council when Ms. Caswell came and did that missing middle, and maybe give him a copy of that if he's never seen it. Oh, you've seen it? Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, kind of a lot of the ideas you were talking about there is in her report, which I, I think it's a fascinating report, really.
Anything else? Thank you.
Who's next?
Me.
Two points?
Deputy Mayor.
Okay, this is our M and M moment.
I feel like I should shoot someone in the audience. I just, I had two questions. One was, I know we're back to a public forum today, and I, you know, I wasn't asked my opinion about whether we were going back to a public forum or not, I don't know if other council members were, but just kind of in light of the county commission is not back to a public forum, and the City of Kissimmee is not back to a public forum either, they do come to their meetings in the building, but they don't have it open to the public. With the spikes that we're seeing right now in town, like, just kind of getting your feedback, I think we should, I think we should still err on the side of caution personally, and, you know, if we go back to the council chambers or even come here, that's fine, but maybe not limit, not allow the public in, kind of what your thoughts were on that?
Orange County just re-implemented face mask.
Exactly.
Yeah, just a while ago.
Well, there's a couple issues that are floating around with regard to that. First of all, the governor's executive order that allowed for, and when, Ms. Matheny, I think when you're referring to public forums, you mean virtual meetings versus-
Right. Or we can be here, but don't have it open to the public, I guess.
Our virtual meetings have always been public access meetings, so just to make sure, and so they, they were public forums in the sense that they were just done virtually, which is what we had to do. The executive order that was adopted by the governor a couple months ago, and which is still in place until probably the first week of July, I think is when it expires, is interesting because it provides that elected officials and appointed officials can attend the meetings using communication media technology. It does not reach to the point of the scenario where you would have the elected officials be in the meeting, but that everybody else appears virtually. By virtue of the fact that most, a lot of cities that did this, set up their virtual meetings with the elected officials attending virtually and using platforms like Zoom and go-to meetings, that gave the opportunity for the public to also attend, but the executive order does not specifically allow and provide for the situation where the council would meet in person and the public would attend virtually. So I don't, I think that is problematic to do it hybrid like that, and especially when it comes to doing a quasi-judicial matter or a zoning matter. So I guess what I'm telling you is, you could go back to the way we're doing, obviously, it's sort of all or nothing, but if the council is going to appear in person and the council's not going to participate virtually, then I think the public has to appear in person also, because that is not set forth in the sunshine law, nor is it set forth in the executive order in that scenario. But if it's the council's intention that they would like to have their next, the council meetings the way we've done in the past, we certainly can do that.
Okay, then I'll change it. I was trying to be accommodating, but, yeah, I think we should stay on Zoom meetings for a little while.
But doesn't that end by July 1st?
It's, yeah, right now, the way it is right now, the only meeting that you probably would have would be your next council meeting unless it gets extended by the governor, and I don't, I don't know what. We've asked, we've made a couple inquiries through some of our sources to see, a lot of entities are going back to regular, regular elected body council meetings, some are just basically waiting out the term of the governor's executive order, and then they're going to go back. The governor may extend it, I don't know. Mr. Sturgeon and I talked about it, I think yesterday we were talking about it, I think there's a real chance, because he had a very good idea of, once the council meets regularly in session, why couldn't we let the general public attend virtually, because that would open up more opportunity for people to participate in meetings to do that, and then I suggested to him that that would have to be a change in the law, which I think is probably going to come, because I think people are going to ask for that, but I don't see it, it's not in the law as of yet, so. I think you're right, Mr. Trace, it's, the executive order goes away, and then once, if the order goes away, then we have no choice but to meet in a regular meeting, and then the public has to meet that same way also, based on the current state of the law.
Don't you think it's helpful, though, to be consistent with our other local entities? I mean, I understand you're saying what Kissimmee's doing, you're saying isn't appropriate, but, I mean, the county, I asked County Commissioner today, and they don't even have a date to come back yet. Now, maybe they're just waiting to see what happens, but, I mean, we have two council members that fall into the category that we need to, you know, be careful of their health and-
And so, remember-
It's Mr. Trace.
I know that Mr. Sturgeon-
He didn't want to point things out.
I know Mr. Sturgeon wants to address his point, and I'll certainly let him, but part of this comes from our concern regarding the quasi-judicial proceedings and how they're ultimately going to be handled down the road. And there isn't any case law out there yet, it's a very unique situation, and we fully expect that there's going to be litigation associated with items that have been approved during this time period, where members of affected parties, members of the public are going to claim they never got the opportunity to fight something now, and we believe that's going to be, we believe there's going to be litigation on that. And that was one of our main impetus is for telling you, Bill, that we probably, suggesting, Bill, that we probably should get back to a meeting, a regular meeting as soon as we can. Of course, that was before we started to see these spike numbers a little bit, so, but that's where Mr. Sturgeon-
Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address that, that, you know, my incident management team looks at this data every day, and we made this decision based on the governor's executive order of going to phase two, so, and from advice of council, that's why we decided to come to this forum here and be able to spread out, because that's what it says, it says resume government meetings with social distancing in place. So I made that decision based on that recommendation. However, I have also talked to Mr. Cooper, I'll be his proxy tonight, he is concerned about being here, that's why he's not here tonight, he's concerned about meeting in this forum, and he wants to go back to the virtual meetings also.
Okay.
I don't have problems.
I'm fine with it, as long as it's legally permissible, yeah, that's fine with me.
I'm good with it.
So we'll work for the next council meeting to be like the last council meeting?
Do we have the time to make sure it's properly notified?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious what the impact will be if the trend goes to letting the public participate virtually, that's going to be a whole new learning curve that happens.
Mr.?
Yes?
We will be publishing the agenda in the morning for next week's meeting, so we can, we do have a procedure in place for the virtual meetings, we can go ahead and switch that tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we do allow the public to participate virtually. We have a whole system where they can log in, and you've heard me at every meeting, say, "No one's here, nobody's logged in."
And they can participate in person, too.
Yeah, and they can do in person or on Zoom.
Yeah, we just haven't had anything controversial come up yet.
Trying to keep that off the agenda.
Okay, I got my second item. So, you guys all remember, we listened to multiple presentations from Fish and Wildlife about the drawdown of East Lake Tahoe, what the plan was, the burning, the scraping, the spraying, and all that stuff. Well, the last email that I've seen from Mr. Tim Coughlin with Fish and Wildlife is it doesn't sound like they're going to burn, which I, you know, was upset to hear that because that's kind of like what was presented, what we all agreed to, what we've told our constituents that, you know, this is what was going to happen in the lake. So I did bring it up to Mr. Sturgeon tonight before the meeting, and of course, he's already got it covered, so I just wanted him to talk about that. I know that I ran into Mr. Darren Soto recently at a function, and he was asking me if we were happy with what was going on at the lake, and, you know, if we had any issues, as long as we as a council had a consensus, he would go to battle for us and try to fight for things. But it sounds like Mr. Sturgeon already has a plan to fix it, but I just want to let everybody know, it sounds like Fish and Wildlife is not burning, so.
They're still doing the scraping, just they're not burning afterwards, or?
Yeah, and which was my concern all along, you remember that I fought about it, because I wanted the biomass out of the lake, and, you know, then we were told, oh, they're going to burn it, and they were going to do this, all the things, so it's, yeah, I'll let him give his update on his backup plan.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Deputy Mayor, I spoke earlier this evening, and what occurred is the Division of Forestry was supposed to burn that, the game of freshwater fish asked them to do it. Because of the COVID-19, they stopped all prescribed burning unless it was some emergency situation. So the next thing we had, we had a couple employees who were former forest rangers who are still certified and qualified, and they were going to do it, we're going to do it, the fire department was going to do it, but those gentlemen are quarantined now. So, I mean, it just gets better. I talked to the Parks and Rec Director today, she was out at Chisholm Park, meeting with the company that's going to do the dredging, and she was telling me about that, and I asked her about the burning, and she said, "We can't do it." So I directed her to go ahead, we have a contractor, we believe that will go ahead and just take equipment in there and clean it all out in those areas, and I'll send you a map tomorrow, I'll have to go dig that up and show you what areas. It's over, I want to say it's over 300 acres of areas we're going to clean out.
What are they going to do with the stuff they dig out?
That's what we need to, that's part of the contractors need to tell us what they're going to do with that, and make sure they don't pile it up down at the lake front.
That was, that was the other part of my argument, remember, was I don't want it-
That was the whole-
Take it out of the lake.
That was the whole argument, they wanted to pile all that stuff up on our property, you know.
Yeah.
But that's what's transpired over the last four months, but we're on top of it, and I'll send a map out tomorrow, show you what areas we're going to be cleaning.
And it's just areas in front of city-owned property?
Oh, it's a whole project.
Yeah, there's-
So, could you give an update to us at the next council meeting?
I will.
Maps and all that, like, so we can get a good idea?
Yep.
Because I said, you know, Mr. Soto offered to go fight the good fight for us, so if we need to.
Okay.
Because even if we do it, the disposal's the expensive part, right? Getting equipment in there and scraping is nothing, but it's the disposal. And it's not like we can just create new piles in the lake, it took a whole lot of state and federal permitting to get that done.
That's what we're trying to do, is not do that.
And I don't want to do that, because then all the nutrients are still in the lake.
So do we need to give consensus that if we can't figure out a cost-neutral option, then reach out to Darren, Congressman Soto?
That would be, that's a nice backup plan, I think that's-
That's what he offered to do, and that's why I was talking with you before the meeting, like, so.
We can give you some nods tonight, can't we?
They'll give me some latitude if this can't be worked out like we think it should, in what I'm clearly understanding.
I'm fine kicking off the conversation, because it's-
Yes.
And the update would be the meeting, the 23rd of July, because agenda's ready to go out. Well, what I'll do is I'll send you an update.
We'll have a meeting next week.
A week from tonight.
Yeah, we have a meeting in a week.
We'll have a meeting next week.
Can you get it done by then?
Come on, you can do it, Bill.
All right, I'll make one, we'll get it done.
At least an update.
Can I push it and do it during my time? Would that work?
Yeah, at least an update.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's it, those are my two things.
So they're not making Metheny Island out there? Is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't want that dang thing, you know? I already got Metheny signed, so I don't mean-
You're welcome. Do you have anything for us?
Nah.
You have anything else? Bill, you got anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Serra?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. I guess we're done.
Yes, sir.
Where's the gavel?
We're done. Thank you, Mayor.